What happened to our clock?
I think we were just trying to be fixed. There. Oh, good to go. Okay. Cool. Yeah. Yeah. I'll graduate in April. I'm so excited. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, like, yeah. All classrooms. Yeah. It should be good. I'm excited for it. We have a friend?
Because if you unmute him, he can mute himself. And then when he wants to talk, he can unmute himself.
Unless he's making lots of weird noises and you can mute him.
Yeah, definitely mute.
Sorry, I'll be right back. My son just woke up, so I gotta go get him, I'm afraid.
I just threw this on. I still have jeans on.
Molly told me that I was not to wear a tie.
And he just works at the temple on Tuesdays.
Oh, yeah, you're coming straight from there?
So he just comes right from, wow.
You didn't get my mom to dress clothes and my mom?
No.
I'm gonna bring some salmon.
I'm making a little bit of progress. I'm better than I was.
There you go.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna sport here, so, so I'm giving you... Okay. If you sit down here like you're struggling, just toss one over your head.
It's six o'clock, so we're gonna call this meeting to order. Oh, wow, it's five o'clock. Did you say? I did say six. It's hard for me to know. It's five o'clock. It's still so early. Um, thank you so much for coming out tonight. Really appreciate you being here, bringing your ideas and input, and as well as, uh, us stepping through this learning process together about pickleball, because I promise you, you know a lot more about pickleball than we do. So it's really good to have you here. Um, I'll introduce Jeremy, just because he's on our screen. Um, I don't know if we'll have him on the screen behind us. Will we, Callie?
Do you want it?
I think so. That would be good. So I've had, I've asked a couple of people to be on a Zoom, just so if the council has questions, we can, um, have their questions answered and we won't, um, have anything that we don't know, uh, hopefully by the end of this meeting, to be able to make a decision about applying for this grant. Um, so Jeremy Waite is from SUU. Um, I could just let him introduce himself, but I'm not sure how his volume will be, and we'll see if we can get him on the screen. And then we have planning to be on the call. We have Stuart Stillson, who is the person who gave us the cost estimate from Stillson Courts. And then the third person is Brian Comerick, and he's played in tournaments around in the southern Utah area and is quite an avid player that, um, I was recommended would be good to just have to answer questions about pickleball in general. Um, so those are our three Zoom people. And then also, we asked Jett Smith, she's our city events and recreation person to be here, as well as Justin Dally, who is our department head for our city parks. But we will start this meeting with a prayer that will be offered by Jared Mibas, and then we will be led by him in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll dive right in.
Our dear heavenly Father, we are grateful for this opportunity we have to be able to gather together. As those fellow citizens of Parowin, Father, we ask that thy Spirit be with us and attend us as we talk about, um, the events or the, uh, the, uh, pickleball courts we're gonna talk about, and help us to be able to have some minds and, and to be able to work together as a team to be able to accomplish, uh, the things that I would have us do to help Parowin City to grow and to become a better state. Father, we're grateful for all the things that thou has blessed us with, and we ask that these papers are blessed to be used so that we may describe.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Jared.
Thank you, Jared. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so just to give you some background, um, the TRCC grant is one that taxes are collected, um, from restaurants, and that grant is awarded to projects that help with restaurant patronage and tourism in general. And so that grant committee, when it reviews applications, that's really what they're looking for, um, is activities in communities that help with, um, basically increasing social outing to restaurants and tourism in general, which in turn affects those businesses. And so we had kind of looked at that grant historically. Parowins applied for it, um, for different things, uh, things at the fair, things with events, um, other things that, um, you know, we've just used the grant for city things. And it's been pretty minimal, um, in the past, but when the topic came up that it might be possible to fund pickleball courts, and it was a, a pretty quick, um, realization that if we put this project together, there was a chance that this would be a good year to apply for courts for us, for Parowin.
Mayor?
Yes.
I believe that the soccer fields were built with this grant. I see Jett back there nodding her head, so...
Okay. Well, Jett, do you even wanna talk, say what the TRCC is? I just realized you know more about it than I do. Do you have anything to add? Um, you can come up to the microphone. Might be better.
And, um, what it's, it helps any community that will bring people in to eat. We have two different ones. We have one that's Heads in Beds, and we have one that is, and they're through the county, that is for restaurants. And, um, when you do things like soccer fields, that brings in people to eat at your restaurants. That's how they collected the tax. And so that's how we got the one for the soccer fields. So what it is, is you, you do, you apply for it. Then we have to go down and we have to talk to, like, um, I'm not positive, but Rusty, uh, from Rusty's Ranch House. He was the guy who, uh, you know, you talk to them all. You have to plead your case, the whole bit, show them you've done your homework, and then it's, it's, you know, you get it or not. And we have been turned down before. I tried, I think it was for asphalt, right? We tried for asphalt one time, 'cause we wanted to make the Lions Park be a little nicer, and we got turned down. So, you know, it just depends on, or, you know, if it's gonna bring people in. And with pickleball, man, this is a hot thing. It is very hot. And, uh, the city of St. George is a, uh, I mean, unbelievable. They can prove how it's brought people in to eat. And so it was just brought up that we try for it. So, and it never hurts to try, so. And we have the land, so it was worth trying for. Okay?
All right. Great. Thank you. And, I mean, there were comments, and I received some phone calls and things. Is this a little on the fly, or is this something, you know, that we haven't really had time to look at? But knowing we had the time in between, um, we could talk and develop it more. And I've been really grateful for that, for that time, because I've been spending, um, spending this time doing some, some additional research. So just at the end of the week, we did talk to that committee, and they did say they would be willing to give us an extension. But to really use the time well and to try to get it turned in as soon as possible. And that's why we called this meeting tonight, as the week, uh, looking forward to the end of the week, people's schedules just got harder. So it made sense to do it as soon as we could, which was to announce it with 24 hours advance notice. The council was great to agree to come and meet this evening, um, and then we could talk about it, hopefully get everybody's questions answered. Um, so the other, um, just piece of kind of information behind it is, in researching and calling around, just to kind of give you an idea, um, I talked to, um, Wayne Bullock at Little Valley. I talked to Jennifer Weaver at SUU, who's done, you know, she's doing the intermural for, for them now. She did Rec first Cedar City for 20 years. I talked to Carol Marchant, who did the coordination for the Summer Games. Um, and then talking to Jeremy, he said, "You should talk to Brian." And then I talked to Stuart about some of the questions that council members had brought up as far as O and M. What would replacement costs be on things like nets? How often would we have to replace nets? If we wanted to do Wing Guard, how long does that last? If we need to resurface, how long can we expect the surface coatings to last? And so I asked Stuart Stillson if he could be here for this meeting, because he has built courts. I could let him introduce himself. I guess I could let each of you, um, introduce yourselves. That might be the right thing to do. Um, we can just start with Jeremy. Can you kind of quickly give your background, so they'll know who you are and who, why, what kinds of questions they could ask you?
Yes, of course. So my name is Jeremy Waite. Um, I, uh, work full-time at the university at SUU, um, and I teach the pickleball courses there. Um, so I teach, you know, it's just a one-credit elective class, but, um, we only offer three classes each semester, and those fill up right away. So I have 90 students every semester. Um, but they all love it. Students are always fighting, trying to, to get into those classes. Um, so it's, it's growing very fast. Um, and then I also teach the community and professional development classes, where we'll offer classes, um, to community members in the evenings. Those also fill up extremely fast. Um, and then I've just gained a decent amount of experience in playing in various tournaments, mostly, you know, St. George and Vegas, and, um, they've done a couple. We've done some at SUU, um, as also, as well as the Utah Summer Games this year. Um, we, we ran a smallish one, because we only had about six courts. So we, we made that as big as we could, um, but it, it took up all day, each of the days that we ran that during the Summer Games, so.
Awesome. Okay. Brian Comerick?
Uh, I live in Cedar. I, I just like to play pickleball. I've been playing for a couple of years. I play with Jeremy. Uh, we started a league this last summer, because there hasn't been any Cedar City leagues. And it felt, we just put the word out to a few people, and it filled up within, like, 30 minutes. And then we did a fall league, and people just keep saying, "When can you do it again?" You know, and we're just limited on being able to do courts. Leagues and tournaments are where I think that you get your return on investment. People come from all over the place for the tournaments. I, I've gone to quite a few in Bountiful, which is really big, um, up there. They do national, local tournaments. If you go on, like, pickleballtournaments.com, you can see there's tournaments pretty much every weekend, up north, or in Vegas, or within, you know, a half-day drive. And people are looking to go to them, and they all fill up really quick. Uh, I've done leagues in St. George, um, like, last year I did the Fall, Winter, and Spring League. And if you don't get in in the first few minutes when registration happens, you can't get in. They fill up just so fast. And, and it's just really fun. Um, all ages can play, um, from kids to senior citizens. It's just a great family activity, and tourists look for it. When we're playing at the SUU courts, from the Shakespeare Festival people, um, to the National Parks people that are here, that's, that's an activity they look to be able to do while they're in, in our town. And so, you know, we're, I think you all know, we're trying to get some courts in Cedar as well, but I think Parowin would be a huge addition, um, just for people going to Cedar Breaks, to Bryanhead, and just a great community thing for your, for your community, but also for the tourism as well. And your tournaments and things like that'll bring in people to fill the hotels and, uh, and the restaurants. I'm just a big supporter of the pickleball community and, and just see how, how it works well for communities. And there's so many small towns that have courts, you know, Castle Dale built a couple of courts, Fillmore, um, Canash, you know, they're all over the place. And, and they're just always busy. And, and usually, as soon as you build a few, they fill up, and you're gonna wanna build more, so.
All right, great. If you get knocked off, just call back, or just, um, we might, the re, the meeting might reset. So if you get knocked off, just get back on. All right, so Stuart, if you'd introduce yourself?
Yeah. Yeah, so, you want me to just introduce myself, kinda?
And where you build courts, and kind of what you know about it?
Yeah, so I've been, uh, down in southern Utah, St. George area, for almost 40 years building courts. We've done the courts at Little Valley, Sun River, all the high school tennis courts, uh, most of the, uh, city parks courts, as far as Washington City, Ivans. And so it's been something I've been doing, like I said, for almost 40 years. And I've actually worked up, I actually worked, I think I mentioned to someone, to you or someone up there, that we did the, worked on the courts at the old, the ones behind, behind the high school, years and years ago. But there, those courts are old asphalt courts, and things have turned, changed a lot since then. Everything's gone to concrete, as far as the longevity and, uh, you know, the better balance in the court. So, anyway, it's pickleball. I used to, you know, I had moved to, from, uh, Utah County down here to St. George, almost 40 years ago. My main business was doing tennis courts. But the last 20 years, it's basically, probably 80% of my business is pickleball courts. That's how popular pickleball is now.
All right, thank you. So we may have some questions for you. I ans, I asked you a lot of, of wear and tear kinds of O and M questions, but there might be a few that we didn't get asked, and I'd like the council to have an opportunity to ask you those. Um, so basically, just really, really rough background. And again, if you, if you guys lose the connection, just dial back in. Um, pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in the country. An article that I read from February is 4.8 million people. My guess is it's a lot higher than that now. I know when I learned about it, I was finishing up at SUU in 2014, and, um, Professor Lund said, "You need to learn about..." Lund, I think, he said, "You need to learn about pickleball," and I just kinda laughed, probably like some people do when they first hear about it. I don't know if this is true, an urban legend, but I guess it was named after somebody's dog named Pickle. So I would chase the ball, and, and one of the people that created the sport named it pickleball after their dog, and I thought people might appreciate knowing that, because that's always, you know, people chuckle at the name. But, um, really, one of the strongest points of it, and just what I wanted people to understand here, that maybe weren't as familiar with pickleball, the rate that it's growing, but also, um, the reason it's so popular. And, uh, the reason is, is it's such an approachable sport. It says pickleball is more straightforward than tennis. It requires less movement. The court size is smaller. Players can reach more areas without moving much. Um, it says, "While the agility and responsiveness needed for both games is similar, pickleball is the clear winner." And it's basically because anyone can play. It's a very, as I said, approachable sport. Um, it was played initially by elderly citizens, because it requires less physical fitness and strength. Um, but as it has grown, it's now definitely all ages. It's, um, potentially going to be, and one of you might be able to correct me, but sanctioned for college and also the Olympics. And youth is a big segment of growth in the pickleball community. Um, it says, "Besides that, you also don't need much strength to hit the ball with power. Unlike the tennis ball, the pickleball is lighter, and combined with a smaller court size, you can return the shot without exerting too much power. However, this does not mean that you can't play, that you can play the game, be, despite being extremely unfit." So any age, any ability can enjoy pickleball. And really, just in talking to the people that I mentioned, and plus those on the call, I got really excited, um, about the sport. I had a better day, um, Friday, Monday, and Tuesday, just talking about pickleball. So it's pretty, a neat community, I would say, overall. And, um, really, if you talk to anyone who plays pickleball, they say, "Come out and play pickleball." It's just one of those sports that's really easy to invite and get people started in. So with that being said, um, I will open up the questions to the city council. Questions or comments?
Well, I'd like to make a comment, just comment first. I have three witnesses here that I went and did pickleball last night for the first time, and I survived. Oh, you heard? But pickleball, because I did play tennis, pickleball is actually more dangerous, because those girls, those women were hitting it hard. But I think it, I think it's a gr, I mean, I, I loved it myself. And I only did it for maybe 20 minutes, maybe 15, 20 minutes. And I'm probably 75 to 80% I'm gonna play. I just gotta get oxygen on, on the side, you know, carry it. But, uh, I know it's out there. I know people love it, and it's great. And it's, I've had both knees replaced, and I was able to move around, and I think it's great. I think it'll be great for the community. We have to make sure we can afford what we, what we do. But I'm not against pickleball. I want all of you to totally understand that, please. You want questions about it now?
Sure.
Okay. Stuart, how often do you have to refinish the court with weather, like in Parowin?
The average, uh, resurface timeframe is about five to seven years. Um, and I'd say that's probably on the lesser side. You can actually probably go more, seven to 10 years. But it depends on how much they get used. Um, like down here in St. George, Little Valley, the courts down here, the city courts, they get played on from daylight until almost nighttime. In the summertime, when it gets real hot, of course, they're not playing when it's 110 degrees down here, but they get played on constantly, even when it's, I mean, it can be raining or sprinkling, and people are still playing, 'cause pickleball, you can play in the rain, where tennis, you know, the tennis ball has the fuzz on it. And you, once it starts raining, you don't play tennis. But pickleball, they'll play, they'll play that when it's raining or sprinkling, just 'cause they can, but... Um, but yeah, your que, to answer your questions, the average is seven years. And most people go about 10 years. Like the ones out here at Little Valley, we've resurfaced 18 of them the last couple of years, and they have six more to do. And the six that we haven't finished yet are almost 10 years old, and they're still in pretty good shape. Like I said, they, they probably get played on more than any court in southern Utah, or maybe in the state. I don't know.
Is that ma, does that matter if it's indoor versus outdoor? Could maybe you could comment on that, the effect of UV?
Yeah, the UV, yeah, the indoor ones, I mean, the outdoor ones are gonna, they will fade, you know, 'cause it's gonna get, it's like having a car, and it's sitting out in the paint, or your car's sitting outside, getting the sun beating on it all the time, versus in a garage. It will fade, but they still hold up pretty well. They're a non-glaring, the, the acrylic surface that we put on them is a, a non-glaring surface, so it's, it's more or less like a, a flat, I should, what I'd call it, a, uh, a low sheen, but there's really not a sheen on it, 'cause you don't want any glare when you're playing. So it's, it's a, a flat color, but it will, it will, anything outdoors is gonna fade. But the only thing that, the only reason you would resurface it would be for that reason, after some many years, well, for two reasons. One, if it starts to fade, it just looks like it's old. And the other one is, if it gets played on a lot, um, it's kinda like when people are shuffling their feet on the court, 'cause the, the surface has a texture, a sandy surface on it, gives you the traction. And if you're, if, it's getting played on all the time for, I would guess up there in Parowin, it's not gonna get half the use, we, half the use that we get down here in St. George year-round. Like I said, they, their courts have gone eight to 10 years before they resurfaced them.
And, and how much is it for?
Sorry?
Did he go off?
It did. And I thought we had, but it's okay. They'll, they'll get back on, and hopefully we'll get them reconnected. Um, is there any council that have comments or questions that don't involve the panel, or should we just wait for the panel? You need to approach the microphone and say your name in a legitimate... Yeah, we can ask that.
I'm Sam Holtermann. My skateboard's in my garage, and I'm wondering how the sk, the surface will hold up to skateboards. By the way, I don't ride skateboards.
They will be. Kids are kids.
Just come up. Um, just while we're waiting for, to get this reset up, Justin, did you wanna come up and talk about the park and what that park is like in terms of groundskeeping?
Hello, I'm Justin Dally. I'm the park supervisor, uh, department head. Um, the Lions Park is, in my opinion, the best place that you could put it, if, for a park, because, um, I've only probably got about, I would say, three inches of good soil, and then underneath of that is nothing but rock. So it's, works like a leach field. And, um, we waste a lot of water. And, uh, so, um, if you guys, saving water, that'd be the best place to do it. And, um, it's a lot of mowing. Um, the sprinklers that I put in there, they're super expensive. Um, and it's coming to the point now where these sprinklers that I'm having to refix, I've rebuilt them so many times, that now I'm having to buy brand-new ones. And so those are becoming very expensive. Um, so as far as, like, the maintenance, um, I hope that cuts down my part. And, um, yeah, that's...
Justin, how big is that Lions Park acreage-wise? The, the whole park?
Three, 3.4 acres.
Now, what does that entail? Does that entail everything?
Yes.
excluding the old pool, or is that just the grass?
Well, that's the pool. Yes. So without the pool, it's like 3.3 acres.
Okay, so they're talking about an acre and a half in this, I think, something like that.
Right, which would be...
So you'd be taking half of it.
That'd be okay with me.
Well, I know, but I'm saying that's in proportionate to be about half.
Yeah, yep. And, uh, like I said, you know, my sprinklers, they take a lot of water to keep that thing halfway green, and in the middle of summer, it still burns. So, yeah. Any other questions?
I just think it'll save on all of your hours trying to maintain it.
Yes.
It's gonna save on water.
Yep.
Which, that's a hot topic right now.
Water, fertilizer, um...
All of the above.
Time, everything, for me, it will, so.
I'm sure even more of it could be utilized for parking or something, too, if there was a concern to try and use it.
Yeah.
It's more of that part to...
Right, and...
You know, get rid of some of the...
Yep.
The u, the grass. But then there's other things, too. There could be walkways. There could be different things that could be incorporated into this, so.
This may be a good time, while Justin's standing there, and while we're getting the Zoom meeting, um, put back up, maybe somebody could talk about the design that was done in 2017. Um, I don't know if anybody was on the council during that time, but... But this was designed for some pickleball courts, and tennis courts, and basketball courts, and it was engineered, paid for, but maybe, maybe we could bring that up. I'm forwarding this new Zoom link.
Dan, I'd like to ask a question. You can, yeah, do that, too, but, uh... Okay, we, we've heard about the operation, but what about, maybe I'll discuss this RAP tax that we were talking about, being able to, you know, obtain, that we haven't had, that could be helped, as far as, you know, to, you know, operate, maintain some of these facilities, type of facilities. And, uh, the new T, what is that, TR?
TRT.
TRT. Maybe we could discuss that?
Sure.
And see how that would, uh, offset some of the costs.
So, um, I'm just emailing out this new Zoom link to our participants. Hopefully, they see that on their email. I just responded to the email from earlier today, so you should also see it in yours, Mayor. So, um, and just for the, just for the record, or for people to understand, TRCC is the grant money we're talking about. It's called Tourism, Recreation, Cultural Convention, and Airport Facilities Tax. Um, it's, it's designed for, um, local governments and school districts and... But it's not just something that businesses can apply for. It's specifically for, um, local governments specifically to apply for. It comes from, um, all restaurant sales. There's a 1% tax that's added on to all restaurant sales. And also, if you rent a, um, a short-term rental of a, like a motorcycle or ATV or something, there's a tax on that as well. Anyways, um, when, when Jett mentioned the Beds and Heads tax, or program, she's referring to the... she's referring to the TRT tax. And that should sound familiar to any residents here because the city just instituted the, a municipal portion of the TRT tax. That stands for transient room tax. That's applied on hotel rooms. Hence beds and heads because it's talking about bringing people into the county that sleep in a bed that night. And, um, but this tax that, that funds this grant program is specifically related to restaurants, which is why Rusty Aiken is the chair of that advisory board to the county because he owns Rusty's. They usually like to have a restaurant owner and restaurant owners, they wanna have a restaurant owner chair it and they wanna have restaurant owners on the committee. Anyways, just a little bit of detail there. But, um, the city next year will be, um, um, putting on the ballot to start a, um, RAP tax. And, um, also we, I've already voted to start a municipal TRT tax. Um, the municipal TRT tax will take effect Jan-, um, April first. And it will, it's, it's a little more open than the county's TRT tax, which has to be spent specifically for tourism. Um, the, the city's municipal TRT tax can be spent on anything kind of of a general fund nature. Um, however, um, and this was, this was Councilman Gale's, I don't remember. I think everybody agreed, but I remember Councilman Gale being concerned about this, that we would specifically try and use these funds for recreation, tourism-related things because that's where the money comes from. So, um, we're not exactly sure exactly how much money that that is gonna bring in, but that, the wills are already put in motion. That's already passed. We'll start receiving revenue in, um, the second quarter of next year, on a calendar second quarter. It's our fourth quarter for the city's fi- fiscal. And the RAP tax is something that will take place if it's approved on the ballot in the November ballot. I'm guessing it will go into effect in twenty twenty-four. And that is also, I'm not as, maybe, uh, maybe Rochelle could, could weigh in on this. Your RAP tax, you have to have a, an advisory board and RAP tax has to be spent also in recreation arts and things like that. And the, and the RAP tax is a little bit more constrained on how it can be spent. But I believe, um, things like this can qualify for RAP tax, um, as well.
You're right with that. It is recreation, arts and parks.
Okay. I knew it's then for something like that.
I'm just.
And we also are not, I don't think we have a huge, I don't think we have a real accurate determination of how much money is gonna come in from that.
Right.
But, um, as we start looking at, you know, we, we talked in the last meeting about, about reviving and kind of putting some, some, some effort into a, a rec program. Um, specifically that was the principal's ask that we kinda work on some, on some, working with the school district to kind of rehab and, and put some more emphasis into our rec program. Certainly we can use these taxes for that. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah. I just wanted everybody to realize that we're gonna have some revenue that's gonna be coming in that we have not had that can help with these type of venues and these type of, you know, things. Jett, are you? Okay. I, I was talking about the tax.
So Jett said that it can't be used for maintenance. If you could come to the mic.
Okay. Right. I understand that. What I was talking about was the operation, the maintenance and things when you have this RAP tax and this TRT tax, that some of those funds may be able to be used for that.
Can you come talk to the mic, Jett? So people online can hear and for the record.
The, the heads and beds tax, we get that every year. We get twelve thousand dollars. Um, this year I'm gonna increase it four more thousand on it and I hope we get it. But that is mainly for advertising of all of our events. So anything that we are promoting to get people that are seventy miles away to come to Parowan or come to Cedar City, that's where that, that one goes, is the head.
And the city one is not constrained the same, the way the county one is.
And the city one is different, right?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it's still TRT. It's applied on, on, on rooms.
Yes.
But the portion that we get directly from the state, instead of apply for a grant from the county, we can spend it however we want.
We can do whatever, which would be maintenance. But I really feel that with the three or four tournaments that we can run a year, um, we could, I think we could make enough money to store that money into maintenance of the thing. And a good thing is, is we have bathrooms up there that are brand new. We have a pavilion up there for people to bring in food trucks to eat, things like that. Their children can play there. It, it's just a really prime location. Being on one forty-three, we've got all those people going to Brinehead. And California is like, I mean, Florida's like the biggest place for pickleball. But, I mean, when we started this program, it started off as just a little, oh, come and we're gonna teach you how. And there probably was twelve people. I mean, and that was, I wanna say ten years ago when we started this. So it's really not that new to Parowan. And, but now it's just, it's really gotten big. Because, and, and, you know, there's apps for it. There's, there's so many things. And to run a tournament is actually not that hard. I, I've really studied up on it. I've talked to a lot of tournament directors. It was just like when we were told that we're running a marathon. We studied, we did it. It was successful. I think we can run a lot of very successful tournaments. And, uh, you, you know, and with being on that one forty-three, man, I think people will come.
Well, thank you. Cause that's what, I was just trying to reassure everybody, this isn't gonna be a drain.
No.
Because there's potential here. I'm all, I'm for it. I'm all supportive of it. But it's, you know, I just want them to understand that, you know, you know, you get, they get, look, okay, you build it then. What are you gonna do? Well, I think we have the means.
We do.
That, that's what I was trying to say. There's different opportunities that are coming along. And along with the operation of, like you say, if these tournaments and things, but there are some other in- income sources too.
And you know, our.
So I just want everybody to understand that this isn't gonna be a drain.
Our volun- I mean, our, our pickleball community here in Parowan, they are, they're fun. They're just a bu- a really fun group of people. And the thing of it is, is, you know, we, everything needs volunteers, you know? And I think we have the support from our pickleball community, um, just like we do with our runners and the marathon community. I think we have lots of support that we could run these tournaments and make them nice. Really nice. And, and that way they keep coming back. The, a good thing that, I mean, we have the winter, which is the pits, but, um, well, not if we need snow, but. St. George gets so hot in the summer. And they always are trying to find places to run, places to play pickleball, places to hike. And that's where we have that advantage is, is right there, you know, to, to, and we're ahead of the game by having the bathrooms there and the pavilion there and some extra land, like Justin said, you know, that we could do something. And our parking actually is pretty cool. I mean, all the way around you can park. You know? And if we put a sidewalk all the way around, it's also a nice little walking path around it, you know, in the future. But it could make it a really nice place to be.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
So just from, thank you, Justin. Just from managing the meeting, um, I don't wanna keep our panel on until we lose them again. So if the council has questions for any of, of our panel, I'm gonna open that up again to, to that.
Well, I'd like to ask Stuart again on, on the, uh, on the courts, around how much does it cost to resurface a court? Approximately, just ballpark.
A single court, it's about, it's about seven thousand dollars. Well, actually it could be less. It could be anywhere from five to seven thousand dollars a court, depending on the condition of the court when we, when we resurface it. But, um, worst case scenario is about seven thousand. Best case would be about five thousand per court.
Does that include painting it?
I'm sorry, does that include?
Does that include repainting the signs or the striping and stuff like that on it?
Yes. That includes the lines and, uh, the, so when you resurface the court, we don't have to strip it down to bare concrete unless it's got problems with it bubbling or peeling. But basically we just pressure wash it, clean it off and you go right over the top of the existing surface. You basically just add them, a new acrylic surface to the existing surface, building upon it.
What about like snow on it and removal? Do you recommend removing snow on it or just leaving the snow, melting it? There's a, is that gonna be dangerous?
So you wanna, yeah, and I talked, uh, I think, I don't know if I, who I mentioned it to, but as far as snow, um, the snow on the courts, like if you have windscreen on the courts, that doesn't cause a problem because the, if there's windscreen around the, on the fence of the courts and then you have shade and the sun never does hit that spot, it's kinda like the side of your house, side of your house that the sun never hits, the snow doesn't melt. So, um, you normally just leave the snow on the court. You can't, I mean, if some, if someone's trying to play on it in the wintertime, you can brush it off or blow it off, but you don't, and you could use a plastic shovel, but we've had people down here a couple, you know, we only get snow down here in St. George about once a year. And so when there's snow on the courts, people freak out. So they'll go out there with a, a shovel or a pick or something and try to get the snow or ice off. And of course you don't wanna do that. So you just wanna either let it stay on there and don't touch it till it melts. Or if it's a fresh snow, it just happened the day it snowed, I mean, that day it snowed, you can go out there, broom it off with a broom or blow it off. But you don't wanna use anything like a metal object or shovel like that because it will scrape off or damage the surface.
I will say too with the courts here in Cedar City, they melt very, very quickly. Um, and like Stuart was saying, just the spot where the windbreakers shade it, those are the only parts that we have problems with it melting. I mean, sometimes even the day it snows, it, it melts off that same day and dries off really quick just because the sun beating down on that, those courts warm up pretty quick and they melt pretty fast.
Yeah. The sun, if the sun can hit it, it'll, it'll melt it pretty quick.
And while you guys were off, one of the people brought up that what if somebody gets on there with bikes or, uh, rollerblades or skateboards, stuff like that? Is that damaging it or is that what?
So the, so the surface that we use is made, uh, it's a durable, it's made so that people could, uh, skateboard or rollerblade on it. We don't recommend it because, I mean, we normally in the cities that, the courts down here, they'll post a sign, no skateboarding, no rollerblading, you know, strictly for, uh, pickleball or basketball, whatever you're gonna use it for and court shoes, you know? They'll, they'll put it, they'll post signs, but you, you, you will always have kids that will sneak out there with their skateboards, rollerblades. The, the wheels don't hurt it. What does hurt it is if they get out there with like a bike and they have a metal object like their kickstand or their pedals on their bike and they throw their bike down, it will just scratch it. I mean, it's easy to touch up and fix, but, uh, that's the only thing that, what, what it does, it might gouge out some of the acrylic surface and we, we have to come back and just fill that in or touch that up. But they're pretty durable, but, you know, they're, I've seen a little bit of everything as far as what kids can do. And, but they, I've never seen one destroyed by kids coming out there and skating on them or doing something like that. So.
I have a question for.
Usually okay.
I have a question for Jeremy or Brian. Um, how, how much of this, the courts in Cedar utilized during the winter with snow and all that stuff?
I was gonna mention that. We play pretty much all winter. Last year on the days that there's snow, you know, we can't. But like we're playing tomorrow, you know, as long as there's not snow on the courts or ice on where the shade is. But I think they're gonna take the shade slats out because that's the only place the ice hangs for a few days after the snow. But I'm surprised how fast the courts dry out, like when it rains. Like when we were having our league and it sprinkled in the afternoon, it's like, we were doing it on every Wednesday night. For whatever reason, it started raining every Wednesday night during the summer. And they would dry out like really quick. It's just like, I don't know if it absorbs or, or where it goes, but it dries out faster than like the concrete and the asphalt that are around the courts. But in the winter, we play, you know, whenever, whenever it's really not snowing and there's not ice on the courts, people will jump on the courts and play.
What about wind? You guys get more wind than Cedar, than Parowan, but wind is, uh, I don't think it ever stops blowing in Cedar.
No, it just makes you a better player. You gotta play with it, you know, you figure it out.
Yeah. You mostly see the time of day that, that courts are the most busy. That kind of shifts with the weather. So like during the winter, you see a lot of people out playing in the middle of the day, twelve o'clock, one, two o'clock, um, when it's a little bit warmer, but they still get used, um, a ton. Now that we have lights in the courts at SUU all through the summers, the lights don't shut off till eleven. And if you go between five and eleven, I mean, I've waited over an hour to get on a court before. And so SUU doesn't have a good rotation system. Most courts do. So I, I talked to Molly a little bit about that as well. But, um, yeah, the wind, as long as the courts are, you know, dry enough, which like Brian said, they dry super fast. But the wind, I mean, sometimes it's kind of inconvenient because it affects the ball some, but you learn to play with it. I've, there was a tournament I played in in St. George where the, it was ridiculously windy, but the worst part was that it was blowing dust into our eyes. And so you couldn't see what, you know, because there was dust flying everywhere. Um, but we still played in that tournament and had a blast. And actually we probably had a little bit of an advantage because we were used to playing in the wind where it's always windy in Cedar, but, um, still a lot of fun to play in, in the wind. It doesn't make it where you can't play.
Well, where these courts are, it's like at the mouth of the canyon, so you get the canyon breeze. And they were talking about a six-foot fence on the outside of the courts. Question is, would it help if it was a taller fence with the, with the windscreen up? Would that help at all? Or is it just a moat with the wind?
You can put, I mean, most of the courts that we do, we only put a six-foot fence around them. Tennis courts have ten and twelve-foot high fence because, you know, the balls are gonna bounce out. Pickleballs don't bounce ve- very high. I mean, they'll go over the fence if someone hits it, but they're not gonna bounce over the fence. But it's an added cost to go on eight-foot high fence, which I don't think you need. I mean, it would help if we're gonna put windscreen on that fence. It'll help shelter some of the wind. But then you do either have to take it down in the wintertime so you don't, you know, if you're trying to keep the courts playable in the wintertime so you don't have that ice. Cause it will, you know, once you have that windscreen up, it's gonna cause, uh, problems for the court to dry in the wintertime.
If you do put a windscreen up, I'd say take it down in the winter.
Yeah. That's what I would do if you, I mean, it does help. Windscreen does help. But like I said, up there, you're gonna have to take it down if you wanna be able to play in the wintertime. Otherwise it's not gonna dry in those areas.
Are they hard to take down up and down?
No, not really. I mean, it, if you have a couple of city guys or have people that wanna volunteer to help take them down, it, it's easy to show someone how to put them up and down. So it's not, it's not that bad.
They pretty much just slide into the fence. Like we have volunteers in Cedar that said, yeah, if we, if SU gives us permission, we're happy to come help take them out and we'll store them wherever they want them stored. So.
So do you, do you use the zip ties to tie them to the, to the fence or?
Yeah, you can zip tie them. They come up, they, you know, they call them zip ties or cable ties. They, they're real easy to put up and then you clip them off when you wanna take them down and then just get new zip ties, put them back up. Or you can lace it with a rope. Takes a lot, it's a little longer to put it up with the rope because you gotta go weave it in and out of the, the grommets and it takes a little bit longer to do it that way.
You'd only need those wind screens on the side that you're concerned about wind. You wouldn't need them all the way around, would you?
Did you hear the question? He asked if you'd need the windscreen all the way around or would you just put it on the side the wind's coming from? I mean, how generally do you do them all the way around or do you place them just strategically?
You, I mean, if you're, I don't know where the courts are positioned as far as where you're putting them out. But, um, you know, if you get the canyon winds coming out of the, the canyon that, from the east, I guess that's the east side. That's what I'm trying to think. It's coming out of the east there. But, um, you could put it on just the one side that you know that you have the prevailing winds coming through.
Right.
Um, you know, you don't need to put it on all the sides.
SUU has them on the south side and the east side is where they put them. And they put slats in the fence so they just slide in and out is the, what they use there.
Yeah.
Is it chain link, Brian or Jeremy? Chain link and then they put those vinyl slats? Is that what it is?
Yeah. Yep.
And those, I mean, there's pros and cons to both. The vinyl slats will probably last longer than the windscreen as far as, uh, weathering and wear and tear. They take a little bit longer to fit in and out than, because you're putting a slat at a time in. So it takes a little bit longer to take those out, put them in versus putting up a, a, a full stretch of, uh, windscreen. It's one panel, one lane, but it's kinda sixes.
So I talked to six different people, um, coordinating events that are just avidly involved in kind of community pickleball. And I asked the question about building fewer courts and every person I talked to said the same thing. So what would your response be to, um, a concern of maybe starting with just a few courts? Um, what is the minimum court, number of courts? And, um, what's ideal to actually be able to run an effective tournament? To have a, a venue that people would say it's a, a reasonable venue for a tournament? Whoever wants to answer that.
I'll let the guys that are playing, playing the tournaments, I think you probably need the eight courts. But I'll let those guys chime in on what they need to run tournaments.
Yeah. I was telling Mayor Halterman when I talked to her on the phone the other day that, you know, you may. Yeah, I was telling Mayor Halterman when I talked to her on the phone the other day, that, you know, you make work whatever you can do, like, if you only have six, they made it work for the summer games, but it just made it a hassle, because the tournaments dragged out a lot longer, because they're always waiting for another court. Um, so eight will make a huge difference to be able to more effectively, um, run a tournament, because you, the way they do the tournaments is you have different age groups as well as different skill divisions, and so, you know, you can do age, you know, up to nineteen, and then you can do twenty to forty-five or fifty-five, so there's all different age groups, and then within all those age groups, pickleball has skill ratings, three point oh, three point five, four point oh. Um, and so you have a lot of different brackets that you're running all within the same tournament. And so with, you know, six or fewer courts, it, it becomes pretty difficult to get all of those brackets going and, and done in a timely manner. And so, um, eight courts ends up being, you know, a pretty, pretty decent turnout for, for tournaments, so. And, and the difference in that too, when you're talking about generating revenue, um, through these tournaments and through leagues, the difference that those two courts makes is, uh, it makes a huge difference as well. We, we, Brian mentioned that him and I started the, the league that we did on SU's courts, and so we had six courts, um, and we can do five people per, to a court, the way that we run those leagues, and so we had to cap it at thirty people, and like Brian said, that sold out within thirty minutes, and we didn't even do any marketing, we just sent a message out to the people we play with. Um, so I think, you know, if you can only do six courts, you can only do what you can do. Um, but I think you would regret not finding a way to, to be able to put eight in, because even with eight, I think you're gonna be looking for ways to get more courts and, and to add on to it.
I would just add that it kind of just limits, however many courts you have, kind of limits how many people you can do for leagues or for tournaments. You just figure out what that number is, and, and the more courts you have, the more that you can, you can have participate for it. And just from what I've seen with courts, I've been following kind of this for a couple of years, and no matter how many courts a place builds, it's like they, there's a demand for more, because if they have six courts, they fill up to six, and people are waiting. If you have eight, if you have sixteen, if you have twenty-four, whatever it is, there's people waiting to play, and it's just, it's a sport that just takes off like that, and like, if you haven't played, I'm, I'm glad some of you on the city council there have played, but it's an addicting sport, once you play two or three times, you're like, trying to hit up everybody else to come play with you, because it's just, it's really fun, it's outside, you get fresh air, it's not too hard to pick up, and, but I, I think just as many courts as that you build as that you can, it all comes back to budget, like always, but you'll find that there'll be a demand for more as soon as you get those built.
Yeah, they range from, you guys know, I mean, it can range anywhere from seven or eight years old to eighty, ninety-year-old. I mean, everyone plays at any age group, and it's more, it's a social sport, people like to linger and hang around and socialize, and so it's, it's definitely popular.
The other thing about it is you can just drop in, you don't have to necessarily show up with a group of people to play with. You can show up to the courts and people just rotate you in, it's really a community thing like that, that's just kind of known, and that's why the tourists will just stop by, and just expect that you can just drop in and play with whoever's there. You know, you try to look for people that are about the same skill level, but it's really a pickleball community type thing, that that's just kind of known, that you can just drop in and, and join in.
Yeah, and one other piece with the, as far as, you know, just a, a healthy local economy too, is bringing people in. When you do these leagues, I mean, if you feel like you don't have enough people in Parolin, which it sounds like you do anyways, but if you open that up to people from Cedar, from St. George, um, from nearby places, you're gonna have people that are coming, they're gonna be eating at your restaurants, you know, for tournaments, they go multi, multiple days. Um, because you can do singles tournaments, you can do tournaments split out by gender, where it's men's doubles and women's doubles, and then mixed, where one partner's male, one's female, um, and so they usually do one of those each day, and so then you have people staying overnight. Um, as well, I mean, Brian and I, we've got a group of friends that we travel down to St. George for tournaments and to Vegas, and, you know, and we all go out to eat together, and they have food trucks there that everybody's buying things there, other vendors there. Um, so for all of your small businesses and local businesses, it's a great opportunity for them to, that, you know, Brianhead put in a couple of courts up there, but I think they just have two up in Brianhead, and so everybody going up to Brianhead, um, where pickleball's the fastest growing sport, you're always gonna have people that are like, oh yeah, let's, you know, go skiing for a day, and then we'll go down and we'll play pickleball, we'll get lunch, um, things like that, and so it's just, it's great for all of your local businesses there, um, a good, healthy economy.
Awesome. Okay, does the council have any other questions for the panel, because I don't want them to have to stay on if they don't want to? They're here to answer your questions. All right, so, there's nothing else? Thank you for being here tonight, being willing to get on a Zoom call and answer questions, it really helped to have your insight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, the three of you. Thank you all.
You bet, thank you.
Thanks.
It's good to see you again, Brian. Thank you. All right, um, and the council has the information on the courts that, and kind of the park, that plan that was done in two thousand and seventeen. Um, this plan I mentioned at our last city council meeting, but they have the plan in paper, so they could look through it. Um, that city council identified this park as needing, um, improvements as well, so it's a lion park, Lions Park Improvement Construction Drawings. And those were drawn, surveyed, um, designed with two pickleball courts with basketball markings along with, um, a volleyball pit. So, in looking at that footprint, um, it looks like with that same plan, there would be room to do, you know, these courts. Um, and like was mentioned, there's bathrooms there, there's pavilion. Um, really interesting to me, the, uh, tensioned concrete court is specifically in this design that says that when the criteria, um, is, is put out for bid, that the construction must be the new post-tensioned concrete multipurpose courts, which is, um, in the cost estimate what was priced. And so, I just thought it was interesting that this has been, you know, when you look through the plans on this, it shows the fencing, it shows, um, really the cross-sections of the design of the courts. Um, so there's been, you know, obviously, effort in this direction, uh, if anyone wants to bring any additional information to this project, but I'm not sure where it went, but I do know that Sunrise Engineering did the design work for Parolin City, and that it was signed off, and there was even a, a bid packet, uh, in the folder where it could go out for bidding. Um, so I'm not sure what happened there, but clearly, it was identified, um, as a great place to have this recreational amenity for the community back in two thousand and seventeen.
And just so the public is aware of what we're looking at, again, this was the design back in two thousand and seventeen, this is not the design we're considering now, other than general location and, and gives you an idea of, of size and scope. I think you can actually better optimize space for pickleball, um, to work with basketball. Um, it looks like that's a little spread out from what they do now. Um, but that square, you can see, you can see the parking lot, that's pretty easy to identify. Um, and then there's a little square to the right of the parking lot, that says, preserve the existing restroom building. So that's, if you think about the Lions Park, that little tiny square just down from the pickleball courts is the existing bathrooms, and then there's a rectangle down below the volleyball courts, that's the existing pavilion, just for reference sake of kind of what was being considered back then.
So, this is like in between that and the swimming pool?
Yeah, yeah, it's just north of, of the restrooms and south of the swimming pool, that's what we're looking at. Obviously, the layout would be different for pi- for just pickleball, and potentially also basketball. Um, that's one thing that also hasn't been discussed a, a whole lot in this conversation, is, um, we, we can, um, they can put the things in the ground, so these courts can be configured, and the city could decide how to optimally leave them configured. So you could have some that are set up as basketball, some as pickleball, and then if you had a tournament, convert them all to pickleball, or if really the demand was all pickleball most of the time, you could leave them all set up for pickleball. But if, if Jet wanted to do a, a rec thing, we do have a, a basketball, a small basketball league that is, works in the fair building. You could do an outdoor basketball tournament, convert them all over to basketball, um, different things like that. Now, also to be clear, what's in this bid is just pickleball, and I know Molly asked the question and wrote down the answer of the additional cost to, to make it, make these also be, um, com- um, compatible for basketball, and you remember what that was per court?
It was like four thousand a court, so it'd be something I would think would be it down the road, or phase two, or, you know, by demand, and demand.
Definitely, you'd build it into the concrete.
Mm-hmm.
But you could make it so, um, we, you'd actually add the standards or buy those, you know, things later. I would think it would be, just it, my opinion, which, you know, would decide whether you want to hear my opinion or not. Um, I'm here to talk more about management, but my opinion is, is it would be a shame to put these in and not make them as versatile as possible.
Um, what about tennis?
So you can actually paint a tennis grid, um, also on, on these. Um, tennis is slightly different size, so, and I wish we had, um, what's his name, Steelson?
Stewart.
Stewart, he did answer that question, do you remember what he said?
He said that pickleballers and tennis players don't really like to play together, and so I didn't continue to, to expand on that conversation, he just said, you're gonna have your hands full with pickleball. Um, I think I, I prodded a little on the basketball question, just because I knew on this design that was there. But, um, you know, his answer was just, yeah, they can, they can be multipurpose, we can do them any way you want to do them, but just to be clear on the bid and kind of this initial phase one, it's, it's about, it's about pickleball really, because then we'd be adding additional cost to do anything more than that. Um, but we could explore that if the community feels the need is there and the demand is there to explore basketball option for, uh, just additional use for these courts. Um, the only other thing that I think I would add to that is, it looks like, when I look at this, it's, I'm not even sure, and I've talked to several community members, you know, obviously, this is just a schematic from two thousand and seventeen. We could look at that, um, and look at it from a lot of different directions, the council, and, you know, e- e- engineer, uh, anyone to tell us if this is the right direction, what the best configuration, we know the courts need to run north-south. Um, so, again, this is more just of a representation of this project that was, um, was planned for, that didn't, uh, didn't get executed. So I just, again, felt that that was worth bringing to the table, that this isn't a new idea to do something more with this park, but it's been something that we've wanted, I think, as a, as a city, uh, council, as well as a community for quite some time. So, and if, if anyone knows anything about that or wants to add anything to that, that would be great, because I only know what I have here on paper in front of me.
Maybe since there's a vacuum, I'll talk, um, in this bid, there's also lighting that is included in the bid. I think there may be some people might wonder about that. Um, there is, uh, the question was asked, what is the, the O and M, like, on a daily, weekly basis? And I don't remember who told you this, the ma- the mayor did a lot of research on this, and then I've come in and been involved a little bit. Um, the mayor has done a lot of work, especially in the past week, as we, um, as we knew that the grant had been extended on the deadline, she's done a lot of work, so I'm, I just want to give her props for that. But somebody said, one of the main things you want to do is make sure there's a ho- there's a hose bib nearby, because really, your maintenance includes just spraying off the courts, really, um, for dust, and then, you know, that's, that's basically from a maintenance standpoint, it. If you happen to have a couple of zip ties break on a, on the windscreen, you want to hurry and replace those quickly, that's a maintenance issue. So you don't want to have those things flapping in the wind for a week or two, because then they, then you can get damaged. But they're designed for those to, to be, um, the, the weak point that breaks. So really, from a maintenance, you're looking at spraying off the courts. Your biggest maintenance question, of course, is replacement of nets, replacement of the surface, things like that. Um, and we would want to have an idea from a, you know, keep an eye on what sort of revenue we're bringing in, and having that, not that we necessarily need to set it aside, but make sure that that's covering the cost of replacing, you know, the full court every eight to ten years, and, and make sure that our fees that we charge if we do a tournament or whatever, is gonna cover the cost of the capital maintenance on these. So, that's, that's something that we would want to factor in, so that we're not just, you know, pumping money into it.
So, basically, the nets, and I know that those of you who play know, um, you can buy cheaper ones or you can buy nicer ones. The cheaper ones, every couple of years, you have to replace, they're seven hundred dollars. If you buy the nicer ones, they're twenty-five hundred dollars, and they said they last eight to ten years. So we'd really have to just see how things go, if we ended up buying nets in two years, we had, and we were doing, the program was doing well, you know, we could consider buying the more expensive nets, or we could keep buying the cheap nets, but, you know, this will be things, again, some of you know a lot more about than I do, um, but in researching, just even the program that we have running right now, and, um, not even considering a tournament, um, we'd be doing pretty well to cover our costs. And then if you even start talking about tournament, or clinics, or camps, or anything, um, that would just be additional revenue. So I feel very comfortable with the O and M of maintaining these courts. I feel like the program would generate enough money without there having to be additional money put in through any other revenue stream to maintain these courts. And, um, you know, I think we would even have surplus, um, if we did a lot with tournaments. Um, and when I say a lot, I mean more than two, because really, I was thinking, calculating according to doing one a year, and felt very comfortable that we would be in good shape.
I have a question for Jet on that. Yeah, Jet is a little shy at the microphone. I specifically asked her to be here, because if, if we do this, you know, a lot of this is gonna be on her shoulders from a rec, from a rec standpoint, and I know that Callie's gonna want you to be at the mic, um.
And she sat the farthest away.
Oh, there we go. So, um, so from a management standpoint, time commitment standpoint, I mean, labor is always the biggest thing that we, we factor in when we start talking city costs. Um, is there, is there, and how much volunteer stuff do we believe that there can be to help with this? How much of a time commitment on you are we talking about? I don't want to go down this road without thinking this through, because.
I, I really feel, um, I don't know, our volunteers are wonderful, you know, and so, like, right now, I'm starting to work on next, I mean, I'm always six months ahead, you know, in the summer, I'm working on Christmas, Christmas in the country. So if we, you know, get that six months ahead and decide we're gonna do it, we can do it. And it's gonna ca- it's gonna be a lot of volunteerism, um, you know, but like, my office staff, my girls in the visitor center, they're great. Um, there's a program, um, certain programs, like I use for my marathon, I was looking, checking it out today. And so all your registration and everything, it's all online. You hire a company, like I hire Race Entry, that you hire a company just like that, and they, they will put it all in categories for you. They, you know, they'll say, okay, you know, you're a, you're, um, categorized a three, you're this age, they put it all together for you. So that's the biggest part of running a tournament, and, um, I, you know, and they don't cost that much to do.
That was my question.
Yeah, they really don't. Um, I, I pay a little over two thousand dollars every year for this company that does it for our marathon, so, but you, it, you know, and if you belong to, I, I wish I could remember what it was, if you belong to, um, the Pickleball Association, there's an association, you can buy materials and stuff at a better price. Um, so we've, we're on our second set of nets for up there in over ten years, and it is inside, I understand that, you know, but we're, and these are gonna last us probably for another five or six years, you know, if you don't get people jumping over them and stuff like that. The nets do last.
I tried.
You tried?
No.
I, I heard, they told me all about you going up there and playing, so that's good, I'm glad you went to go see.
It was quite a sight.
Yeah, it, it's good, it was glad to see. Um, go ahead.
How many pickleball registries, if you want to call it that, is it forty-five or something?
I, I think I've got forty-eight.
Forty-eight, you have.
And that, but, and that's not counting, uh, guests, we have guests.
Right, that's just in town, and that plays most all the time.
Um, more than half of those are, um, they do the whole program, they go from October to.
They do the yearly?
Yeah, they do the yearly, so.
Which, right now, it's a hundred and fifty, is that?
A hundred and fifty dollars, yeah, because, what's that? No, no, it, it stayed the same from last year, so. What it is, is we were thinking we would have to raise the price, but because of the count, not being, not our building anymore, and, you know, we might have to next year to do the indoor, uh, things up in there. Oh, yes, the membership has, yes, the membership has doubled.
So it's roughly around seventy-two hundred dollars just for membership, that they, roughly.
And you know, most tournaments, you're getting a hundred dollars, um, I was looking online, the ones in Florida now, these people are paying five hundred dollars to be in a tournament. So, I mean, you know, we won't get that in Southern Utah, but it's a, you know, you're getting pretty good money.
So let me ask you a question.
Okay.
Now, this is putting on your dream hat.
Oh, I love it.
But let's say you have a court, the courts that we're describing, and you had a tournament. Could you- could you theoretically, would you theoretically bring in food trucks and stuff like that?
Yes.
And you think, and would they want to come and do that?
I don't know if we'd bring in as many food trucks, but first, when anything like this...
You do have a food truck on city property thing or something, we'd have to figure out, but...
Uh, and we can do that, I mean, we've had them on city property quite often with different events.
I'm just wondering, what does a tournament look like here? The timing of it during the day into the evening, you know, all of that stuff?
You know, I go to bed and I don't sleep, but I think about things like this, so no dream in there, it's just thought. But, um, you know, you can have a men's tournament, and you can have, uh, so, the more courts you have, you can have these tournaments with the different categories and the different ages and stuff like that. But if we're in a smaller scale, you could have just a men's tournament, then just a ladies tournament, then a doubles tournament. You know, so you're still going to have quite a few tournaments, but you're going to have to make it in a smaller scale. Because like St. George, man, they throw it on men's and women's and, you know, every age and every ability. We'll have to do it in a smaller scale, and right, and then...
And they have courts, their- their facility has like, what, twenty-four courts or something like that?
Oh, yeah, they just, I mean, I'm down by my daughter's house.
If you're talking about that kind of a size of tournament.
Yeah, and- and what's really cool is, um, I mean, and I do it, it's crazy, but, I mean, I don't travel without my pickleball and my pickleball bag, because, I mean, we, like, we went to Beaver one night for dinner, and we went over to the K O A and played pickleball, you know, and, 'cause it's- it's that addicting, it's fun to do. But most of these people, you'll- they'll come in and they say, "Oh, where's your pickleball courts?" We get them, we get phone calls constantly, "Do you guys have pickleball courts?" And then, there's an app that, if you play pickleball, it'll tell you, like, you're driving down I fifteen, "How many courts does this town have? How many courts does this town have?" And it tells you exactly, and we're on that app that we have the three courts right now. But I just, you know, and then, the- the thing that's really nice about this, if we grow this park, um, we've talked about it before, about putting in an outdoor gym. We have the land there to do an outdoor, uh, an outdoor gym there. And this basketball thing, three-on-three tournaments are another thing that's just huge. And we can have three-on-three tournaments, you know, so, um, maybe, I- I mean, my dream would love to see this as a sports complex, a complete sports complex with the app, you know, with, I mean, you still let your kids play area, but, you know, have an outdoor gym, have a sidewalk all the way around it, so people can run and exercise, you know, and- and just make the whole complex. The kids can play, dads can play basketball, you know, the church groups can come in. That's a huge thing, and- and then too, you can rent pickleball, um, you know, paddles and stuff like that. We don't do balls, everybody has to bring their own balls, but, you know, if you put a rental package together, that's another idea.
So that brings up another conversation. Um, this does not, this bid does not include any storage or any- anything like that facility-wise. Um, I suppose, depending on what happens with the pool, whether- whether that building is torn down, and- or that pool is torn down and we did a new pool, or whether we rehab that pool, potentially, we could use that building. Is there any space in there for storage or for rentals of pickleball stuff? Or were we talking building a, putting a shed in, or, you know what I mean? Any thoughts along those? I mean, I don't think we've had that conversation, but, and that could be a phase-two type thing, but...
I think Parloin, we could find storage easily. I mean, I have a full basement over there that, you know, I don't, depending on what you're trying to store.
You rent, you rent or- or just hand out?
Frisbees.
Frisbees from the visitor center?
Yes, we do.
So you could theoretically do it from the visitor center?
Mm-hmm, yeah, and, you know, we did, and it's a big thing, it's amazing, 'cause a lot of people don't travel with the- the nicer frisbees to use. So, yeah, we do that too, so... And then, you know, I have a maintenance guy on my side, and so that relieves a little bit of, you know, Justin's work too, you know? So, you know, we could work that out also. The- the, uh, swimming pool, which I want a swimming pool still, but it does have two big dressing rooms that if something did, you know, if you guys don't do something with that pool, it could be used as a storage. You know, 'cause it does have two big dressing rooms that could be used for storing, so...
Well, I'm thinking, the only thing you'd really need to store would be if you were to take down the windscreens seasonally, or potentially, if you're renting out equipment or something like that, you know what I mean?
Now, I've seen the- the windscreens that are rollable, they like roll up almost like a- a sheet of, I don't know what it is, kind of a meshy sheet thing, and then I've seen the slats. And the slats, I don't think you have to remove, even in the winter, if I'm right. They're- they're just slats, aren't they, that go right?
Yeah, but it's a shade, it's a shade problem.
Okay.
They're removing them so they can get sun on the court.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, so I don't know how, I don't, it doesn't sound like a lot of storage, but I'm sure we could figure that out, so...
Carrie?
Thank you.
Sure, come on up.
Larry Zajac, just a couple of things to consider as we're talking about this. One is, pickleball is popular enough that we don't really need to limit ourselves to one tournament. Jet kind of hit around the edges of that and said, "Oh, we'll have a men's one, have a women's." But a- a tournament in a- in a big facility really looks like one big tournament, men's, women's, and, you know, they have all the divisions. And- and so you do that, but you could do that more than one time a year. St. George doesn't have a pickleball tournament, they have several tournaments in a year, and- and that really should be what we're looking at. I mean, it might tax resources and so on, but that's kind of how pickleball works. The other thing that I would mention is, listening to the pickleball court provider, I'm a little bit leery about the- the statement that the surface is going to last ten years. I- I know people that have had experience with that type of a surface, and it's probably not ten years, it's more like half of that. And so really, and at the cost that was stated earlier to- to resurface those, we are looking at about a thousand dollars a year per court. You wouldn't get them surfaced every year, but your actual maintenance cost for each court, just for resurfacing that particular surface would be a thousand dollars a year per court, so you're looking at...
That'd be the conservative approach, and then if you got more out of it, that's, you're lucky, right?
Right, but I, yes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Come on up.
Vicki Hicks, and I can't see over the microphone. I have a question about the- the grant that we're talking about, and I'd kind of like to know if you, uh, if you're going to ask for a complete grant for all of the funding, do you think possibly that the... I want this to pass. I play pickleball, believe it or not, and if I can play pickleball, anybody can play pickleball. That is a fact. So, this- this is near and dear to all of us, but I'm- I'm, I want it to pass, so I want to make sure that we've crossed our Ts and dotted our Is and all those fun things. So I'm just curious, is, with- with us not having, well, like, heads and beds anymore, 'cause we don't have hotels, unless we get money from the Airbnb, which I'm not sure if we do get those dollars from the Airbnbs or not.
All the Airbnbs collect it, yep.
They do, okay, 'cause I don't remember collecting it when I had the bed and breakfast here, so...
Yeah, it's- it's done automatically by the software companies. Airbnb or, um, the other one, they collect it, B R B O.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they take it out as part of the transaction, so that the- the actual owner doesn't have to do it.
Okay, and now that our hotel is gone, is it going to affect us applying for the grant? Is there a possibility that they're going to look at this and they're going to go, "We don't have restaurants open on Sunday? We don't have a hotel that accommodates."
So when- when Maria talked to, when the mayor talked to Maria, and I used the phrase in our last meeting, that- that this board really lights up when you bring up the subject of pickleball. I think all the discussion today about people traveling and everything tells you why this board really loves the idea of pickleball. So they- they're in love with it, but, hang on, let me rephrase. Maria, who is the county's T R, our tourism director, is in love with it.
I'm familiar with this.
Obviously, the board could surprise us all and not give the grant. Um, by the way, Jet is on the board, so there's one vote. But, um, but they seem to be very favorable in encouraging us if we- if we wanted to do this, to the point where they- they rarely ever extend deadlines. And the fact that when Maria found out that we were hesitant, we were- we were, there was concerns that we hadn't fully vetted the idea, and we were jumping the gun and all that, she said, "If you need more time, I'll give you more time." I- I mentioned that to another city manager, and I won't say who, he was like, "What? She never extends a deadline for me. I'm going to call her," and I said, "Don't mess with her, just let it just be." So anyways, I, my point is, is I think that they're very, um, excited to do a project like this.
Well, I'd really like to see the city or whoever has the influence to come to, because if we're talking about tournaments and we're talking about people coming here for the weekend to play, they need places to stay. They need places to eat. I'm concerned about the- the mobile home park or motorhome park out there that's coming in, that what happens if a motorhome comes in? They break down, they need a place to stay, they need a place to eat, and they're here on Sunday. It scares me, that worries me about our community, but I think that we need to work on that. But I really do, I want to say that we went to a pickleball, I want to support Jet- Jet a little on this. We went to a pickleball tournament in Brigham City. They had, I think they had eight courts, didn't they, Greg? Oh, they've got about twenty. They've got a lot. They had food trucks in there. They were charging twenty-five dollars a pop just to walk in to watch. That wasn't to play. We paid twenty-five dollars a person just to get through the gate to watch, so... It was, it, it was a wonderful tournament. It was, and it's, and Brigham City is not any bigger than Parloin, much bigger than Parloin. So I- I think there's definitely an opportunity there. I just want to make sure that we're looking at the- the grant and we're seeing all of the aspects of that grant, that if they come back, and if they come back and they say, "Okay, Molly, this is great, we love this, we're going to give you the money for it, but we're only going to give you eighty percent." Okay, so if we have to come up with twenty percent, can we do that? Or do we get a black mark for, if we have to turn the grant down? Those are just different things that I wanted to bring to the table, to kind of share with you guys to- to make sure that everybody's kind of hit on every one of these ideas, that's it.
So my thoughts...
Thank you.
To that, um, would be, if they would only give us like eighty percent of it, then we cut out twenty percent of what we want to build.
Well, they would only do eighty percent of what?
Of what we were asking for.
Well, yeah, or what's the funding and so, I don't think they would, if we do, they want twenty, they want, this is probably to see us contribute something, if they ask them for that.
If they ask for that, but I thought this was a no-match grant, like, we didn't, we didn't have to do that.
Yeah, they can.
Okay.
Well, I think we can apply however we want to apply. Um, it's just, in- in normal years, this is a competitive grant, and the more skinning you have in the game, the better your, um, your application scores. Um, right now, there's not as many applicants as there has been in other years, so we're not, we're not fighting for as many, um, amongst as many, um, applicants. And again, you, like, businesses and stuff can't apply, this is against other, you know, local governments and things like that. So we would write it as a hundred percent, and we would also, I mean, we would write it that the count, that the city is giving match in terms of donated land and stuff like that. But we would write it from a cash perspective of no cash in with the city, and, um, and, and again, just, and it's not the, this, this is not the board's decision, but Maria seemed to think that that was- was doable. But again, they could come back and say, "If you want to do this, we're not doing it."
Because they know, I mean, the whole point is just the council approval on, on applying.
So in, that's in-kind?
And that we already have bathrooms.
So for those online, Jet said...
Wouldn't have to build bathrooms.
We will show, as we write this, a ton of match, 'cause we're going to show our land donation, and it's going to look really good on paper, whether it's cash or whether it's in-kind, they- they really do look at what the match is and how much we have skin in the game. And this really is skin in the game, 'cause we're talking about the utilization of a current park, and, um, and it's hard to value land be- because is it, is it worth the same as an acre that would be in a residential subdivision? No, it's totally different use, but what is it worth? I don't know, but it's, we're, we'll, we'll assign a value.
Hey, Dan.
Million dollars. I'm joking.
Speaking of the in-kind, just like you were talking earlier, we can say, "We've got a pavilion and a brand-new restroom that we're donating to be tied in with your..."
Right.
Pickleball.
Yeah.
So we've got...
Now, one- one thing to point out, that original, that plan from two thousand and seventeen that we were looking at had a parking lot. This does not have, you know, this wouldn't be built with a parking lot. That would have to be something that would go come down the road. We do have parking, like Jet says, all the way around the facility, just not as...
We've got that little parking lot.
There is a little by the...
Yeah, by the, by the...
And at the time of these plans, that was proposed, and that's been completed.
So we have that, but it is not, like, what we're talking about, that's why I wanted to make sure when everybody saw that image, that- that they weren't, everybody didn't run to the bank thinking that that's what was going to be built. That was the original proposal.
We have designed it.
But yeah, the fact that there's bathrooms there is a, is a really big deal, 'cause if we had to build bathrooms, you're talking about a lot more money. I mean, a lot of your money would go towards that.
And they're fairly, they were just redone a couple of years ago.
Yeah, they're nice, but they're nice.
It's a great asset.
Last year, yeah.
Mayor, wasn't there some offer of, uh, some in-kind in the construction, or...
Just people saying that if we got to that point where we needed to make up a difference. I mean, there are people that are saying that they, they would want to...
But this could be part of it, as far as if they were to be individuals who would contribute, you know, in-kind, that would be part of the contribution, wouldn't it?
If the county, if the city, county comes back, man, I got to get that straight. The county comes back and says, "We'll only approve it if you bring some cash into the game," then we have another meeting and say, "Okay, now what?" I don't really think that's going to be necessary myself, but I guess we could cross that bridge when or if we come to it.
Now, my question is, is around the pickleball courts, is this grant going to take care of the sprinklers that are going to be ripped out? Are they going to be, are we going to have a contractor that's going to redo around it? Or are we just going to have desert landscaping, or what, how's that going to work?
What would you like it to look like?
What would you like?
That's just like, what would you like?
Honestly, like, if we go back to the plans, the two thousand and seventeen plans, um, you know, whatever, I know it's going to be different, but, um, you put desert landscape, people aren't really, they're not going to go sit on a rock. They're going to, you know, go away from it, but if you put grass and picnic tables and stuff like that, they're going to hang out and they're going to stay. My biggest thing is, I don't want the contractor or whomever's going to build it, come in, cut all...
Does it, now you've got a main, big problem.
And then I'm stuck with, "Hey, you guys, you need to put grass back in and get the sprinklers going."
You know, we've been really digging into the details, and I think that's good, because at the end of the day, what is this going to look like? Um, ultimately, what we're, what we're deciding is whether to apply for the grant. If we're given the grant, um, I think we want to make sure that we have a committee, that we talk about exactly, design-wise, what we want to do. Um, you know, we're going to have to factor in a lot of these things. Um, you know, Jet's going to have to really spend some time thinking about programming and- and all of that. We're going to have to organize volunteers, but yeah, you- you make a good point. We're going to have to figure out, um, how it's going to impact the park and make sure that that's dealt with. Um, another, one thing, as we talk about the money that's going to be spent on O and M, I don't, you got to make, you got, you also have to remember how much we're going to save on, um, on fertilizer and...
Maintenance.
Maintenance of the existing lawn. When I, when I talked to Kelly about this, um, I said, "What are- what are your thoughts?" And he said, he goes, "I'm in support of it." And one of the main reasons why Kelly likes this is he says, "This, this park is completely, um, fed by our P I system." We put a lot of water from our P I system on this park, it doesn't have any culinary, and he says, so...
Just to break it down, I- I don't even know how many sprinklers I have out there, but I've got a lot. Each sprinkler costs two hundred dollars a piece, and I'm half in, and that's, I've rebuilt them, I've got... I've got, done everything that you can possibly do to save that cost, and now they're just so old and wore out that we're just having to put new ones in.
Right.
And the amount of water that I use, the sprinklers put out twenty-five gallons a minute. They're big golf course sprinklers. And, um, they run from, they, I mean, when it's my water day, they're, they're running. And I, it's a lot of water.
So when I was running around during Zoom meeting.
Uh-huh.
And I, and I missed this, did you say that this park needs more water than the others because of the, the gravel, the ro- the rocks?
Well, that's the thing is, it's, it's not the fact that it needs more, it's just, it's a leach field. It goes down so far, and then it just.
Sinks.
Sinks, goes, and it.
Hey, we need recharge credit.
Yeah, and exactly, and over the years, I've tried to put good dirt on the top and build up that soil, so I'm not, you know, I'm trying to make it so the grass isn't burning up as easy, but it's kind of a losing battle, and.
Well, and my point is there is, I mean, yes, we have to factor sprinklers in and the impact and, and the design, um, obviously, you're gonna, it's not gonna just perfectly go where you can just take two sections out of, you know.
Right.
Whatever, and it's gonna have to be redesigned, and that's gonna have to be factored into this bid. But, um, there will be some cost savings. There's some times saves, savings, um, on not having to mow it, not having to fertilize it, not having to aerate it, and all of that stuff. And then, on the flip side, of course, then we'll have to do some maintenance of the, of the new facility. But there is some savings in, in both time and, and money, and more importantly, water.
Right, right.
On the BI system.
And, and like you were saying, I think a big thing in like your phase two or something is definitely putting some kind of a shed or something out there, um, especially if it's gonna become a big sports recreation deal, um, just to have that storage there. I mean, we, we don't have a whole lot of storage, and especially during the wintertime, when we're winterizing and everything, putting things away, we're, we're, we're like inches from the walls, and everything's tight and whatnot, so.
Justin, just to answer your question on this bid and stuff like that, no, it does not include any of that.
Okay.
As far as the, that would be, have to take consideration.
Okay.
If we bid it out and stuff, but it does not include.
That may be in-kind match, all of Justin's time redesigning the sprinkler system. Don't have a heart attack, you're on the. And I, and I say that kind of in jest, but, but it's gotta be figured in and calculated.
But I think that, uh, we need to get to the point that we're here. We, we need to decide if we're gonna support this application for this grant, and, I mean, that's the next step. I mean, if the grant's awarded, if we get the grant, then we can go through the planning stages. So I really think that the citizens want us to apply for this grant. I think that the, the potential, the possibility of this grant, so, you know, and the council, we really don't have to approve it, but I think that we should support it. Um, I don't wanna set a precedent, because we shouldn't set a precedent that every grant that is applied for needs council approval, the consent and approval of the council. But I think I agree that it's good that the council understands the city and the, I mean, the citizens and their, their desire for this. And I don't think that's in question, so, uh, unless there's further discussion, I'd like to make a motion.
Can I ask one question before you make a motion to Dan?
Okay.
Dan, as the city manager.
Yeah.
Eliminate the tournaments, can we afford this for the maintenance of what we have now? The tournaments is gonna be extra, it's not, just can we afford it?
So if you completely eliminate tournaments, this is not a question that I can answer with certainty, but I can, I can describe the nature of the revenues and, um, and so forth. Um, we will potentially be able to, to, um, expand our current city program, which we are receiving revenue on. Um, it's a little, it's a little weird where we just have turned over the fairgrounds to the, to the county. Um, when I say weird, I mean, that was something that we had an existing program going. Um, if you introduce outside courts and have more courts, the question is, is how much will the outside courts add to the program? How much will it, what, what is the, what is it gonna look like with the, with the county up there trying to cover its costs and so forth versus the city courts? Um, some people will tell you that this is an outdoor sport primarily, and who knows exactly how many people will come out and start playing and what it'll generate additional revenue to cover our, our costs, um, if you don't have any tournament play. Um, I had another thought that I wanted to, to talk about on that. Oh, back to, we do have new sources of income coming in with the TRT, municipal TRT, and with the RAP tax. Exactly how much that is, again, we don't know, and how much of that would we choose to push towards this? But, but I do feel comfortable knowing that we have potential new revenue by adding to our current city pickleball program, and we have some new sources of revenue which we could dedicate some of it to this. Um, and I know Jet was, was really talking wishes and dreams and things, but I, I do wanna point out that this park, I think, has a lot of potential, whether the swimming pool gets left there or not. But from what, and I got a little bit of an education this week, the family that originally dedicated this three acres to the city, this was their vision, was that this was a, was a recreation place with facilities. In fact, from what I understand, there was a little bit of a rub about the SUU head start.
Yeah.
Because that wasn't.
Important to rub, right David?
I, I, I'm always using diplomatic language.
I didn't want to get into that.
Sorry. But my point is, if our dream is to kind of create a outdoor recreation area in this place, I mean, we can, we, we could, we could create a financial mechanism where we actually dedicate so much money from these places and then, and then have capital projects and, and save up and build a, you know, concrete, um, sidewalk all the way around it. We could save up and do different things, but I'm not, I guess, really worried about this being a burden around our neck just because of the sheer popularity, and I really think of pickleball program, just the city's pickleball program will grow, and that's that much more revenue, so I guess I'm not super worried about it. But I can't answer with finality that it's gonna be in the black.
Well, I know it's the forty-eight, did you say? Pickleballers forty-eight? Forty, did you say forty-eight? That was seventy-two hundred dollars, add a hundred and fifty dollars a year.
Yeah.
If they pay yearly dues.
Jet, how much of that is youth, if we added a youth component to that, or maybe there already is, it's a mixture? Not youth? Okay, you better come to the microphone.
I'm sorry, Jet.
I'm just wondering, are there segments of this that are not being tapped?
You know what? So not being tapped. Um, this youth, we have very few youth. We've had two or three kids that have been with us for about three or four years now, but he will tell you about what the youth want right now, and, cause he's been working with them.
Well.
You introduce yourself.
Brett, Brett Jacobson, the vice principal and athletic director at, at the high school. I'm a big pickleball fan. The way I see this is, this facility would be open to the public. It wouldn't be a cost for the public, but there'd be a cost for the leagues. And that's how you're gonna ge- generate your interest, and, um, we've got, we had the Millers donate pickleball stuff last year in our high schools. We've started doing pickleball units, and I just feel like, yeah, we need more things for our youth to be positively involved in that's outdoors, that's getting kids active.
Mm-hmm.
And yeah, this is pretty much for everybody, um, so it's, I feel like it's a good step in the right direction. If we, if we do this, Cedar's gonna be jealous.
I, I keep having hands shoot up, and I feel bad that you're sitting here all night if you have something to say. So Julie, I've seen yours, and Janelle, I've seen yours, or yours, Julie, did you wanna say something?
Um, yeah, I, uh, it's pretty much repetitive. My name's Julie White. But I do wanna make sure that with our future, the operations and maintenance, the whole pickleball grant, that it goes to pickleball and nothing else. It's a fund for pickleball, and that it's set up that way, and the money that's generated stays in pickleball. That's, uh, I think, in my opinion, that's, at least my, the way I run business, that's what we, I do it, and that's how I use my money for. It doesn't go to somewhere else or something else. So I'm, I'm hoping that that will happen. I've been playing pickleball since twenty eighteen. I was not a very good pickleball player when I came here and played at the fair. And, um, I've done a few tournaments. We did, uh, a lot of us went and did tournaments. We've gone to Mesquite. Um, uh, the ladies have gotten some gold. I, we, my and my partner got gold in Mesquite and played the US Summer Games, and, uh, we had some ladies do that, so I just wanna let you know that our community here is involved, and we wanna be involved. Um, uh, I also, someone that you didn't mention that would, could be supportive that was not here, well, you did, it's Karen Marchant. She's the coordinator of the US Summer Games. So I'm not gonna read this whole thing out, but she, I mean, could you imagine having US Summer Games here? You know, one, a year, and, and having all these people here and eating their restaurants. Same thing with the youth, the youth and going through lessons. You know, there's lessons and leagues and tournaments, and that can be done just right here in Parawan, like Brett said, with through the schools. And that brings in money and revenue again, so. And that money goes, should go back right into pickleball, so that O and M can be taken care of. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Mayor, I'd like to finish my motion.
Right.
I think that, um, we've been extended this opportunity by this committee, and so we should take advantage of it. And, uh, again, we are just applying for this grant at this time, the potential opportunity, and I think it's important that we do this. So therefore, I make a motion that the council support applying for this grant. I don't know the name of it, but for this grant, and that we support it, and that we pursue making application for it.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Um, yes.
My name's Janelle Zajak. I've been playing pickleball with all of these lovely people for several years also. I just wanna say that as you approach the grant and start looking at options, those of you that are not pickleball players, maybe consider putting together a committee of those of us that are, to consider things like the landscape around, because you can have a pickleball court that has nothing around it, and the pickleball players will bring their lawn chairs. You can have concrete, and the pickleball players will bring their lawn chairs. And you can have bleachers, and they'll sit in the bleachers, and they'll bring their lawn chairs, so it's.
So you're saying that we really don't need to provide seating, they'll bring their lawn chairs?
Absolutely, absolutely, but seating would be great. Anyway, just consider a committee of those of us to help you, and I know several of us would be happy to volunteer.
Thank you all for coming out.
Thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Committee idea is a good idea. One thing I learned.
Janelle, Janelle, well, you, you said you'll accept people to come out and start playing? I, I would like to do that. Cause if Sharon Downey can do it, I know I can do it. There's no way in this world am I gonna be out there.
Jim, if you go, I'll go.
No, I'm serious. I'll, I'll arrange, I'll be there.
Come on.
Nope.
Come on.
Can I make a motion? Do we adjourn?
I second it.
Aye.
Aye.